Well, I think we're close enough. We can get started. So, welcome, everybody. Uh, today is March twenty seventh nineteen twenty four. It's nine AM. And welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners work session. We're gonna change up the agenda on one spot. We're gonna move forward with number fifteen.
First, do we have any public comment?
Oh, do we have any public comment? How about anybody on the screen? Raise your hand if you have a public comment.
I think we're good.
Okay, so we'll move forward. So we'll go to number fifteen, which is considered the appointment of a community member of the local Public Safety Coordinating Council. District Attorney.
Thank you, Carrie Hawthorne, Cook County District Attorney. Um, I am Chair of our local Public Safety Coordinating Council, otherwise known as Lipsec. Um, multiple months ago, might even be about a year ago, our community member resigned. Uh, from Lipsec pursuant to statute. Um, there are a number of uh, community members that are involved. Um, in in Lipsec. Um, there is a requirement for at least one lay citizen to serve on the Lipsec board. Uh, we have two applicants. The uh, Commissioners can't appoint both. You're not limited to just one. One applicant is here. It's Deb Patterson. Most of you know her. Um, she was previously the. Uh, the Director of the Juvenile Department. The other applicant is Lori Medina. Um, she moved a couple of years ago to Primeville, has been in central Oregon a very long time. And has been involved in the criminal justice system for a very long time in multiple different roles. Um, and she's currently um, part of the uh, Citizen Academy that the Sheriff's Office puts on. The Lipsec uh, Board met um, and both members attended and discussed. I submitted a letter of support from the Lipsec team. Um, and were you at that? Brian is on the board as the Commissioner Representative, and I can't remember if he was at that meeting, whether they attended or not. Okay, um, Lori's not available today, but I did submit her application. Um, if there's questions about her background, I know her fairly well, having worked with her. Um, previously, she worked for uh, a defense uh, consortium group in central Oregon. So, as a legal assistant, so I know her from that. Um, and then Deb is here, if anyone has any questions. My understanding of the process is the Commissioner should decide if you want to vote to approve one or both. And then it'll go to next week's consent agenda.
And on this letter, it says that they support both community members.
Yes.
I know Lori because she sits next to me at the Citizens Academy, and she's a wonderful lady. I don't know you, Deb, but I'm sure.
I'm a wonderful lady, too.
I I I look like a wonderful lady, so I would make the motion to uh.
Uh, and I don't think we need to actually make a motion today on it. We just need to decide if we want to move forward, and we'll create an order. And then we'll have that for the consent agenda next week.
We will move forward and place this on the consent agenda.
I will draft the order.
Please do. Thank you. Yeah, I know, it's it's great to have two people that want it, but it's generally sometimes hard to find one, so. We want to manage it with them. They're qualified. Great to have them on the team.
I agree. I think it's great to have the community perspective. A lot of times, it's the same people in all the meetings, and so it's kind of nice to have. Um, different perspectives.
And Debbie always has it here. I appreciate it.
I absolutely, I will control the mute at the meetings. Are they all Zoom? We have, we've talked about moving them back to in-person. One of our problems is our presiding judge, who's part of it. Generally, on the days we have it, it's in Jefferson County. We could figure out a blend.
I just, I didn't realize you could see me if I wasn't talking, and I kept throwing the ball for the dog. I kept going, you know, look. So, I probably look like I had Tourette's or something.
We could, we could arrange to have you here or something, so.
Sit in my car, you and the dog will be in there. No, I agree. I think it's wonderful. We have two good candidates. Like you said, I know Lori through Citizens Academy and. Yeah, and I know I'll get to know you, though, no?
Yeah, there might be therapy later for me.
Okay, well, we have a big agenda, so we have marching orders. We'll move it forward to the consent agenda. For, thank you. Thank you. You can go.
Thank you, Deb, for coming.
So, we will move back up to number one, Request to Work Insight Global Control Agency. Amy and Steven.
Do we want the presentation?
So, as some of you might, yes, when you come up to get a recording.
Right, um, so as some of you might know, IT has had the same three openings. Um, the business systems analyst, the IT manager, and the applications manager position open. For over a month, we did receive some applications. They just didn't meet the qualifications of the job. Um, so we were having a difficult time filling those positions. And Steven had worked with Insight Global before or knew them. Um, so I ended up reaching out to them, and I had a meeting with two of their representatives, Jessica and Lena, to kind of talk about. Working with them. Um, and so in your packet, you have a deck put together by Lena. Just about Insight Global, if you have questions about that. But I just went through a couple of things with them. Um. One of the questions that we, that I had for them was basically like, how are we going to get IT specialists here when I can't get them? I can't even recruit for an IT tech most of the time that meets our qualifications. Um, and one of the things we talked about was they do all the recruiting for Schwabs. But they also do all the Amazon recruiting when Boardman and Hermiston, so they're used to recruiting for IT specialists in rural areas. Um, and then in your packet, you also have the costs associated with working with them. Um, so this is something we are hoping to bring to the next regular meeting. Do you have any questions currently?
So are we looking forward today to move forward with?
No, I'm still working with Eric on their contract. It's just something to know that this will be brought forward to you guys.
So what do they get out of this? I mean, you have here the cost of the of the person. What do, what does Insight get?
They get the twenty percent of whatever that person's, yeah.
Okay, and that's taken from the person, not the county?
No, the county pays that.
Okay. I I make a, I I make, I I make a, they can go to consent agenda, or is that what we say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next presentation will be after Eric goes through the contract to look at it.
Okay.
Then, and then that's what we will hold on is the contract.
Yeah, so no consent agenda, basically, because we don't know what Eric's gonna say.
Yeah, so it'll be a discussion item. Okay.
Yeah, we can make it a discussion item. Uh, yeah, and their fee, as I understand it, would be only the successful placement of a candidate. And typically, what we've seen is, you know, there's a guarantee that they would, you know, serve a certain period of time, for example, a year. And if they don't, then they would recruit to replace that person.
Four thirty is that time?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Great. Successful.
They have, so I met with them last week, and they have already suggested several candidates. To us, so. I mean, we're making some progress.
Good, good.
Good job, Amy. Thank you very much.
Well, it was Steven's recommendation, so definitely appreciate that from him.
I've seen a couple of the candidates. I'm actually excited to speak with a few of them already, so looking forward to getting it finalized.
Great, thanks, Steven.
Sure.
Good using IT person right now.
Should we put on here first a whole assistant to communicate or what you do part-time or?
Yeah, you wanna share your computer? All right, so. So we have a direction, so let's go on the next discussion, discussion regarding the non-standard work scheduling policy. Andy?
Yeah, in your packet uh, is the non-standard work scheduling policy that we put together. It includes a schedule of all, for all departments of every type of position that's within that department. There's five different uh, types of work schedules that are applicable, you know, the standard work poli- work plan. Typical work day, uh, there's a remote, hundred percent remote. There's a flexible that includes some remote, some onsite. Uh, a compressed schedule, which would be, you know, a short work week, say four tens, or something along those lines. And we went through with each department and identified what each position could ultimately. Be successful in that role for that, for the county. Not that they have to be in that role, but it gives the department head the ability to. I know, working with the employee, what is available for them in recruiting as well as the retention space. There's no requirement for a department head to put somebody into one of the acceptable roles. If, in their judgment, that doesn't work for their office, for example, it may be that, you know, a compressed schedule is available for all of their office. But if the majority of their office wants to work the five eights, the department head has that for you to go ahead and keep everybody onto that schedule. Versus doing a compressed schedule for one employee or two employees. What it does do is it standardizes what is available by policy county-wide, so that we're not getting into one department's. Doing something that isn't allowed somewhere else, or isn't even talked about somewhere else. This makes it all consistent throughout the entire county, giving that discretion for scheduling to the department head. And doesn't have to come back to the administrative manager or to the county Board of Commissioners to get that approval.
Yeah, this, this is a good direction. We've kind of fought this for quite a while. Everybody kind of mixed match. It looked like they wanted to do COVID, brought a lot of changes and requests. And um, so I'm glad to see we've finally gotten into a policy, so everybody knows what's, you know, what our policy is. And, and it's, it's a wide ones. There's a lot of variance, a lot of opportunities for, you know, to make up your schedules. And five or six different classes that we can be in. And it's nice, it's laid out, and it shows you, you know, all the employees, sort of the job, or by job, not employees, but by job titles and.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, there's a fair amount of work that went into it, a lot of discussion with each of the departments. And, yeah, I think, at the end of the day, I think we expanded that as far as it could be expanded. Uh, you know, the one area that uh, you know, we had discussion with, with uh, you know, several department heads was the compressed schedule for department heads. And, you know, we had just a few areas where, you know, folks were working four tens as opposed to, you know, five days when you've got an operation that's going more than. A four ten. And we've worked through those, I think, and there's a, and I think that's noted in there. The objective is, is that department heads, you know, generally would be working, you know, full schedules. Now, that can be a flexible schedule in terms of, you know, a remote day, you know, on a, you know, given day during the week, that type of thing. Versus having to make the commute and, you know, do the traveling and so forth. But it's geared for them to be able to be responsive on a, you know, to make their department name.
And it's also geared to, you know, to keep in mind that we are an agency that works for the people. And we need to be there for the people when they come in and need things. And so I think it takes all that into consideration, which is in fact awesome.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was one of my concerns, is what Brian just said. When we're looking at human resources, you have hybrid. And I, I would not like to see that both people be out on remote at the same time. I feel that if there's an incident, that someone needs to be there. I know you addressed it in your, what do I want to say, essay? Or, or that about counter time and stuff, and we know building, you have to be there and those departments. But that was the only one that I questioned was the hybrid there, that I would not like to see both employees at the same time be remote.
Right, yeah, and I think, yeah, that's a definite consideration with all of that would be, you know, we have to be based on.
Somebody has to be there.
And a hybrid can be as little as four hours a week, remote, versus, you know, hundred percent required to be onsite.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I understand, like, weather. We had weather this year where people couldn't drive, and obviously it had to be remote. But I'm just saying, there needs to be a face at the counter for the people, and in this case, this is our employees.
Yeah.
And I want to be sure that there's someone there in case of an incident.
Right, understood.
I think you did a very, I I I think the whole document is very good, and I think it also, in recruiting people, it puts that forward. And they know what their expectations are, so I, I do like the document and everything. I thought you did a good job, Andy.
Yeah, good job.
Good.
Sometimes I think I'm, I'm one off and sometimes I'm five off. But in reading that this morning, I didn't find me in there.
My pink slipped in the mail.
You're that special.
You're that special. I was gonna say, sometimes I'm five off, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll amend it. I'll talk with Tim later today. We'll get, we'll get him thrown in under the admin, admin department.
Yeah, Tim was one of our biggest assets. He is, you know, harvest job with uh, natural resources. That used to be a big issue, right?
Yeah.
Presents lots of problems, and he's a good job.
Yeah, he worked pretty autonomous and.
He needs, he does need a paragraph, Andy.
Sometimes hate being in the documentation.
Yeah, now, it's no longer a choice.
Okay, we need to add a paragraph.
Yeah, well, no, we'll get a line for it.
See, once you got yourself a.
Yeah, we'll put you into admin, okay, and I'll coordinate with him to make sure we cut the.
That was a good comment, Tim. And then we'll be rolling this to consent for next week.
Yeah, we'll put it on consent for next week.
We'll see here.
We're right here.
We'll go to um, number three, teen internship grant to the State Library of Oregon.
Good morning, Sarah Beazer, Cook County Library Director.
Sarah, can you come up here and sit, please?
Sure. Good morning. Uh, we applied for a grant for a teen intern, and we were notified this last week in the mail that we were selected. Is thirty-six hundred dollars, and what's unique about this is not a library-created job. It's called a connected learning project, where we're gonna take a look at the teens' interests and gifts, and use that for library programs. And development this summer. So it is a summer teen internship. It's thirty-six hundred dollars. They sent us an MOU, which I'm gonna send to Eric and John, um, for your consideration for accepting it at the next meeting. Any questions on that one?
I just want to commend you for your enthusiasm and going out there and finding these programs and doing what you do. You're bringing the library into the forefront, and I very much approve.
Thank you very much. I'm having a great time.
Great, you're doing a great job.
We hope, I mean, you know, it shows. We can tell what you like.
You're always on the agenda with some of these programs.
So, no, no, yeah. And whenever I go to the library, I don't know if you tell people to come, or they're just there, but it's always got a lot of people there, and that's wonderful.
They're just there. Our parking lot has been full on Wednesdays uh, with Renee, our new children's librarian. She's really bringing them in. Perfect, so, even our overflow parking lot's full.
Well, you're up again, Sarah, with the donation plan for small branch librarian belonging there.
Well, this was an interesting new development. Um, through a very generous offer of some property from Commissioner Hermrick. Um, we discovered that across the road from her property is the county road department. And there is, I don't know if you can bring up any of the pictures, Sarah?
Do you want the pictures or you want Google Earth?
Uh, how about the pictures? Anyway, I've got some that I can send around to.
I'm gonna pay this bit to get there.
Okay. No. Uh, so what we discovered was there is an unused parcel where the school bus is parked, that is owned by Cook County. And there is a fence at the school, which is inside the property line a little ways, and. Oh, that's okay. That's interesting, by the way.
Makes you a little dizzy. Oh, there you go.
We do get down in the weeds sometimes. Oh, there it is, upside down.
Okay. Yeah, you'll see. You got it.
That little triangular piece where the school bus is parked is owned by Cook County. And it is fenced off already from the road department. And I'm here today to ask if we could explore the possibility of putting a very small library branch. We've included a picture of what our vision is, and it's about seven hundred and thirty square feet. And it is this cute little building here. Where people would be able to um, use it as a meeting space, and we'd have library resources there. We felt like uh, the post-grange is in a state of disrepair currently for sale. The store is currently not a viable community option. And uh, the Pal Mau Club is for large gatherings, and it takes a couple of days to heat that up. To make it comfortable for people. So a small community gathering space, we felt that out in Palina, they could use. That kind of community bonding space. Um, and so I am here this morning to ask if it would be okay. If I furthered my discussions with the road department and with the school district, we feel there'd be enough room to park their school bus there. As well as have a small library branch.
Yeah, I think that's great.
And your. Investigation, I think we could, I I don't think it would cost terribly much, but then I might be surprised to build a small branch there. And that would be done through grants and donations.
I think it's wonderful that you have not forgot about us out there, and I think this would be great, and I am working on the Pal Mau Club. But uh, that is, is a challenge because of the members involved that I have. And so this, I think, would be wonderful. It would be an asset. It would look very nice, be next to the school. People that pick up their children could use it. I, I, I'm fully encourage you. And again, your enthusiasm is wonderful.
Well, go start those conversations. Um, I'm not sure what the arrangement is, why the county owns that property and the school district is parking their bus there. Do you know, Tim?
Well, historically, that uh, is a road department site. There was a house. The county had a road person permanently housed there. They also had one on the south side of the Maures, uh, dealing with that part of the county and then.
The city system, sorry. They so, they sold, they sold that house. I, gosh, right before we got there, because John Georgie bought it, in fact, until they're on his, well, on Steve Gillings now.
The reason the county quit staffing it was because labor law, or not labor law, the uh. The safety out there.
OSHA?
OSHA required two individuals to always work together on road department stuff. And so, you know, having a single person at Palina, and having a single person at the south side of the Maures. Didn't work for staffing for road department anymore, so they pulled everybody in town and abandoned those locations except for storage. And ultimately, like Sue said, the house went away. The house went away at Ma- on Maures as well.
Thank you.
And the bus, generally, they park in front of the gym, and then sometimes they park over there, just, and like, like, if you even go to school, you'll park. It's just an, an extra lot, basically.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your generous offer. We never would have come to this point.
Well, I did have a slope. I, I was, I was giving up my Walmart dream. Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Republic Service.
Hey, good morning. Uh, my name is, my close enough. My name's Courtney Boss. I'm the municipal manager for Republic Services, and I'm here today with Erica, our general manager. Um, we're here for two reasons. The first is to update you on uh, our efforts to improve service. And the conversations that we've had um, with Jackie Davis from the landfill and Commissioner Crawford. Um, and the development of a service improvement plan, so they give an update on that. And then Erica is gonna do a preliminary overview of the twenty twenty-three uh, rate uh, report, financial report. And twenty twenty-four rate ask. Um, the thing I will say about the financials is that this is really just the start of a conversation. So um, if there are questions or concerns, there can definitely be follow-up meetings before anything advances. Um.
You can both sit down if you would like.
There's only one, and it's on.
I think we have.
So, the first thing, and it was interesting to listen to, I forget how many speakers ago, was talking about um, kind of accountability. And uh, you know, making sure that somebody is present um, in communities. And I think um, the big takeaway that we've really gotten from conversations recently with the county is that Republic, when we came into this market. Did not do a great job with the transition and the kind of decision to, let's say, corporatize. But corporatize a service that this community really expects and needs to be hyper-local. Um, and so a lot of what Erica and I are focused on doing right now is pulling that back and providing a hyper-local. Um, customer service experience and making sure that the issues that are identified by the county are um, addressed with. Solutions that are designed by um, the people that are, that live here. Um, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the things that we're gonna do and are doing and have done. Um, where the plan, I think, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, is to continue to meet with Jackie and um, Commissioner Crawford. Monthly um, to review uh, the status of these issues. I'm also happy to come here whenever you want or not, um, but uh. Go to be in kind of constant communication and um, really prioritize uh, that relationship. There were some low-hanging fruit things that we've done right away, so Kalina was one of the first things that we focused on. Um, the feedback that we got was that uh, our CRC, our call center, didn't know that we serviced Kalina. Um, so we checked that, and that is correct. They did not know that we serviced Kalina. So we fixed that problem. Um, did a site visit, and have decided to add some additional services out there. So we're gonna be offering residents out there recycling services um, at the transfer station. We don't know if there's gonna be a lot of interest in that, um, but it's something that we're gonna do when we're out there. Um, we are doing a mailing to all of the customers, uh, or to all the property owners uh, that we believe are using Kalina. I think that's scheduled to go out either this week or next week. And on that mailing is gonna be a way for um, for people to sign up for the email distribution list, text notifications, and calls. So that if there's ever a change or something weird or quirky that's going on with Kalina, we're able to reach those customers. We don't serve them curbside, so. They're not actually in our system, um, but we're gonna, we'll work around to make sure that they have access to information and access to us. Um, and then we're gonna also take some promotional material and just information out into that community. Any feedback or suggestions that you have about how to reach that community would be really appreciated. Um, we spent a half-day out there at the transfer station, and it's um, beautiful and also very uh, spacious. So um, reaching everybody is, I think, uh, will need your help to do that. Uh, other kind of quick things that we fixed, uh, there was a specific issue with a specific customer, the water hole. Um, that I think has been resolved for now. Um, cart, container, and box messiness, and just kind of the, the trash that's flowing out from our services. Uh, when we're servicing boxes, containers, and carts. Um, we are doing some driver retraining or mining on that end. And then also our um, maintenance team is working on wind guards uh, for the trucks. To try and help eliminate blowout when we're um, dumping traction to the hopper. Um, and then we're working with specific, there's specific customers that have a tendency to overfill boxes, and when they do that, when we go to haul them. Um, it causes a big mess. So those are quick, pretty easy things to get resolved and things that we're um, are confident are, are gonna be easy fixes. There are some bigger things that were identified that were a little bit more complicated to solve, but I think we're on the right track. So um, you'll remember that I came a while ago with a list of roads that were difficult for us to service in the county. Commissioner Crawford made very clear to us that that wasn't an option. And that the expectation is that we provide service to those customers. So we are committed to doing that. We will make sure that those customers are serviced. Erica was able to work with area to get approval to purchase trucks that are designed for roads. That are not necessarily kind of your standard paved roads. So I think they're four-wheel drive heavier duty vehicles that will enable us to provide service. So that's going to happen because I think are ordered. So there's going to be a little bit of a gap before they get here, but in the meantime, we're going to continue to make sure that all of those customers are serviced. If there is ever a time that we can't, for some reason, we service somebody. The the plan is to first notify Jackie and then have a conversation before we make any service changes for anybody. CRC and customer service kind of experience generally, we're reopening the office five days a week. Currently, it is two days a week. But we heard a lot of clear that that's important. It's important to have somebody at the desk. And we actually do get quite a few walk-ins in the two days that we're open currently. So I think it's, it makes sense to have that open five days a week. And the person that I think is going to ultimately be there five days a week is somebody that lives here in Prideville. And is really passionate about this community. So we're pretty excited about that, hoping to have that five days a week. Starting in July, November of July. Other things that are happening, we're reworking and retraining the CRC and all the documents that kind of guide CRC agents. To make sure that they have accurate, up-to-date, correct information about what's going on locally. And working to make sure that when there are specific complaints that are hyper local in nature. That those are being handled in a timely manner by the local teams, that there isn't a delay. The other thing that I'm pretty excited about, and then. We're going to have, we're reinstitute the mail program. So under previous ownership, I think the customers used to receive calendars and guides and other material via mail. At least once a year, we're going to bring that back. That's something that the customers have asked for. And then we are implementing something called automated customer notifications to really step up the amount of. Information that customers are receiving and making sure that that information is received timely. The last thing that we're working on, and I don't yet have all of the details, is that we're. We are going to do a credit for missed service program. So if customers are missed. They will get some credit on their bill for that. We are still working through the logistics of that because there are obviously cost implications that we need to plan for. And and just structurally making sure that that's set up to work. And so our hope was to have that figured out by early next week. Get that approved internally and then run it by Jackie. And then have her share that with the with the larger group. So we're excited about that and we think that that'll go a long way to kind of restoring the trust and faith that customers have in us. So those are the big things. The other, one other thing I'll just say is that in April, and I might have mentioned this before. We are going to start going through a route balancing and rerouting process. And the goal of that is to make sure that the routes that we're running are the right size. For the drivers to be able to complete in a single day. That will improve the customer experience because fewer people are going to be missed. They won't be, drivers won't be moving as quickly through their route. And we won't have any rollover. So right now, if a route is too long and a driver can't do thirteen hundred stops in a day. They can only do a thousand stops in a day, there are customers whose service day gets moved. So the route balancing and rerouting process is going to solve that. In order for that to be kind of operationalized, some customers are probably going to have a service day change. So before that goes live, before we make any changes. I'll make sure to fully fill in Jackie on who's going to be elected by that. And what our communication plan is to make sure that customers are aware of exactly what the, what that's going to do to their service day. So that's kind of on the service improvement side. I don't know if anyone has specific questions or feedback. But if there are other issues that come up, we're going to address them. We're a hundred percent in and committed and spending a lot of time making sure that you guys are happy and proud of us. So it's lovely to hear back on that. And if you don't have any, there, we can talk money.
Well, it sounds like that you're kind of in the overall scope of how you can better serve the people of the county. And I appreciate the broadness of it. When you realize that there are a lot of aspects and problems that you have in order, you know, that you can fix. Because we just received the calls from people that are mad because their garbage isn't being picked up. And for why the reason is, whether there's too many and you can't get around all of them. And get them all picked up or whatever it might be, at least you're looking into that. I would not concentrate on making the payments or reimbursements. I would focus on doing the job and not concentrate on how you're going to pay when you know it'd be the job. I do think that's important, but if you put too much emphasis on that, you're never going to get the job fixed. You're just going to be paying people. And nobody's going to be happy when their garbage isn't picked up. So it sounds like there's hope that you're working on it. Continue on with your finances.
I second what Wayne said. I think you guys, I think you must have had a good meeting. I think Commissioner Crawford and Jackie and the four of you, you got together and and you're trying hard and that's appreciated.
Ready? Now we're talking the money. All right. So I'm going to go over our twenty twenty-three results and then we'll take a look at our twenty twenty-four results. Hopefully you did receive this information, which is a cover letter or a letter to Mr. Perks along with our twenty twenty-three results and twenty twenty-four. So from a very high level, and it's most of this information or all of this information is going to be on the cover letter. But to look at revenues, so in twenty twenty-three, our collection revenues.
Should we be on the cover letter or your actual financial statement?
I'm going to be going over the cover letter. I think that's probably the easiest place to start. And then if there's any detailed questions, I could certainly answer those based off of the results. So looking at our twenty twenty-three revenue, our revenue increased by approximately three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Or seventeen point four percent compared to twenty twenty-two. This is due to growth in our commercial and residential revenues. Expenses overall in twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-three increased by two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Or twelve point nine percent. This is due to growth in revenue along with other impacts. So I'm going to go over what very high level those impacts were. So labor costs increased by a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or sixteen point eight percent. This is due to wage increases or primarily driven by wage increases that we had with our frontline employees. We did a merit increase, which we do, an annual merit increase in March, usually March timeframe. And then we also did an out-of-cycle wage adjustment for our frontline employees in October, October first of twenty twenty-three. Also, just to call out, this particular line item does include expenses relating to our centralized call center. Looking at our franchise fees, franchise fees increased by ten thousand dollars or seventeen percent. As a result of increases due to revenue. Truck repairs increased by approximately forty thousand dollars or fifty-five point five percent. We experienced, and this is just relating to the cost of parts and labor associated with repairing our trucks. Disposal costs increased by almost fifty-eight thousand dollars, sixteen point eight percent. This is a result of a volume impact along with the gate rate increase at Creek County landfill. Miscellaneous costs increased by approximately sixteen thousand dollars or twenty point three percent. This is obviously a broad category, but it includes. Costs relating to safety equipment, training, physicals for our employees. Management fees, which management fees, our costs associated with our corporate office, our area office teams. Costs associated with our IT systems, accounting systems, environmental responsibility and compliance. Legal fees, things like that. We also increased or had an increase in our bad debts. Meaning fees that are associated with not being able to collect from customers. That was approximately eight thousand dollars, but it was a high percentage increase from year-over-year perspective. And came out to four hundred and thirty-four percent increase. And then there's a line item on the report that shows business and meal travel expenses. This isn't actually relating to. Meals or anything like that, that, you know, the the team, my local team had. This is actually relating to us bringing in drivers in order to cover routes and get customers serviced. That's the cost category that this goes into. So that increased by approximately ten thousand dollars or two hundred and ninety-six percent. So overall, in twenty twenty-three, our total net income was a hundred and ninety-four thousand, almost a hundred and ninety-five thousand. With an operating margin of eight point one percent. So any questions relating to that before I move on to our rate ask in twenty twenty-four? Okay. So looking at twenty twenty-four, Republic Services is requesting a rate increase of ten percent effective July first of twenty twenty-four. With this rate increase, we'll look at what our projected revenues and expenses will be. So with a ten percent rate increase, revenues are expected to increase by three hundred and twelve thousand dollars or eleven point five percent. This does include a volume growth factor that we added in. We added approximately two point five percent. And this ties out to what we're seeing for what is listed for Creek County. I think Creek County is listed at a two point three percent population growth, so we felt like that would be appropriate to add that. We also looked at our projection for twenty twenty-four relating to our expenses. So we approached our expenses from a consumer price index perspective of water, sewer, trash. Increasing from January twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, increased a five point five percent. So we took that index and we increased our expenses by that amount. And then I wanted to call out some expenses on that will increase at a higher rate. And I'll include those reasons relating to that. So labor, we expect to increase by about seventy-four thousand dollars or eight percent. Again, this is relating to the volume growth that we're anticipating with Creek County. In addition, we have our merit increases that we do annually with our frontline employees. And then we're going to have a seventy-five percent carryover from the wage increase that we did in twenty twenty-three. And again, just to note, our CRC or our centralized call center expenses are in that category. That only makes up about five percent of the seventy-five percent or seventy-five thousand dollar increase. Disposal costs are expected to increase by a hundred and four thousand dollars or twenty point seven percent. There is going to be a gate rate increase. Jackie let us know approximately three to three point two percent. And then it's also going to be relating to a volume growth projection. Depreciation of our equipment is expected to increase by almost sixteen thousand dollars or nine point two percent. This is a result of the operating division receiving new diesel trucks. Fuel is expected to increase by almost eleven thousand dollars or seven point three percent. And then our franchise fees are expected to increase by about seventy-three hundred dollars or eleven point five percent. So in twenty twenty-four, with all of this taken into consideration. We anticipate our net income to be approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with an operating margin of nine point two four percent. So I know that was a lot of numbers, a lot of information. So any questions relating to that?
I I I don't pay garbage because I have a ranch. What is the average family of four in in the county? What would they pay? Just average. I'm not asking specific. Is it, do you bill every month or do you bill bi-monthly?
Bills out monthly. It it there's a lot of variables that affect this, but if you had a ninety-six gallon trash cart. Think it's in the neighborhood of forty-some odd dollars a month.
I would have to look to be honest.
But it depends on.
So you're looking at increasing to about fifty, basically.
Yeah, and there's specific rate sheets for specific sizes and specific services. So what we would, what we would do is we can put the rate sheet together and show you what it would look like at different. Rate increase increments, although I'm sure Andy will probably.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it because I don't pay garbage. I just was trying to get a picture in my mind. Okay.
Any other questions?
So I pay forty dollars a month.
Thank you, Tim.
Nine months, south slope of Grizzly.
And you're aware, and and are you addressing that issue that was at Grizzly?
So I think if the Grizzly Mountain residents would like us to revisit that situation.
So I'm not on that route. I know the road that you're talking about. I'm on Winter's Lane. I live on the south slopes of Grizzly. I can live on that road that you.
It is a very challenging road to service, but if that is a priority for the county. Then I think we would want to take Jackie and Andy or some combination of people out there. Look at it together and just make sure we're all on the same page, that that's what you want us to do because it's. It, we've gotten stuck there a couple of times and had to chill out.
And that's kind of why you're getting a different truck. That's what I was, when we did your presentation, that was just what kind of I thought for, okay. The Palina situation, because the store is closed, that it makes it very challenging. I don't know how the school district feels, but if you could include a flyer that went home with every child. That's one way because it goes home to those households. And then the post office is a lease in the store, so she sits at the front counter. And so like, you know, I go in not every day anymore, but I used to go every day. But you could also probably put flyers there and I'm sure Susan would include them in her mailings. I don't think, that's not going to reach everyone, but it's at least a start or a way because it's difficult out there. We're very spaced apart and some of us use your service and some of us don't use your service.
Okay, we'll do both of those.
So there's kind of a bracket that we try to stay in on that. Where are we in that bracket?
What do you mean?
The margin range?
Oh, the margin.
I believe that the county franchise might be at eight to eleven candy or better, eight to eleven or nine to twelve. With a ten percent increase, you'll still be within that margin range.
We'll be at the the low, so nine point two four is what we're projecting.
What is the timing that you're desiring for that rate increase to be considered?
Well, we we are asking effective July first of twenty twenty-four.
The other thing I'll just, so typically, when we met with the county with with Commissioner Crawford, Jackie. And the city, there tends to be a desire to, at least historically, a line between the two. Contract areas. So there might need to be some conversation between the city and county. I'm sure that'll happen with or without us. And then the other thing is that in the franchise agreement, definitely the city, but possibly for the county. There are notification requirements related to the rate increase. That last year ultimately delayed the implementation of the rate increase. Because you have to do it thirty or sixty days prior to implementation. So part of the reason that we're coming earlier this year is because we want to make sure that we hit that notification window. And I can send that schedule to our administrator first.
Just so you guys know, the schedule between the county and the city on the joint effort. Myself, Seth and Christina are going to review the financial report that they handed out. Initially, the city is going to do that on their end and then we are all going to meet together before we have another meeting. Trying to stay as much of a joint effort on this going forward as we can.
Well, nice presentation.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm like you're moving ahead. I'm already there. I'm going to use your pass.
Hey, Jackie, you're up again. Hey Jackie, you're up again. PBS Environmental Contract Amendment.
So PBS Environmental Engineering is the firm that performs all of our environmental testing at the landfill. Anywhere from groundwater and leachate monitoring to the surface emissions for methane gas. We've received their price quote for twenty twenty-four. So John in legal prepared a amendment to their agreement with us. The difference in price is about twenty thousand dollars over last year. The reason for this is lab costs went up twenty percent. As well as DEQ is requiring a split sampling. For the fall of twenty twenty-four, which is where they pull multiple samples from the same site, and then they're required to send them to. Different testing facilities to make sure that everybody gets the same results, so. We're just asking that. We're able to get that approved and move forward with them.
Be cut dry. As soon as Jerry looks it over, I guess we can just go forward to the consent general question.
No, I don't think there's anything we can do about it, that's what has to be done. Be nice if it wasn't twenty thousand. And now comes a thing that I'm really happy about.
With me?
Yes.
I don't have to worry about you being on the road.
Um, so did you, the juvenile department is per to want and wants to purchase a new transport car. And we, during our last budget fiscal season, we budgeted for fifty-three thousand to buy this new vehicle. So I went out and got some bids, I think we're going to go with Lithia and Bend. And we're looking at purchasing a Dodge Durango, it's all-wheel drive, I can keep it about the fifty thousand dollar mark. Which will allow us to purchase an aftermarket law enforcement partition, a cage, if you will, behind the driver's seats. Our, one of our current cars that we're going to be giving to Jackie is got over two hundred thousand miles on it. One door doesn't open, the heat is currently not working, so we can't transport any public people in there, so. That's what it is.
Great.
Guys have any questions?
I am so happy that I don't have to worry about you anymore.
Thank you, I've told everybody, we're not taking the car out of the city limits, but it's been cold, so nobody wants to drive it anyway, because there's no heat, so. You see us in the silver SUV with our beanies and our puffy coats on. Yes, yes.
All right, can we just do this on the consent agenda?
It it is in my budget currently, like it is, and I'm not asking for additional funds that, you know, aren't, it is already allocated for fifty-three thousand, so.
Well, we are very happy, Erica, for you.
Thank you very much.
Do you need authorization to go in or to serve?
Yeah, I think I just need a signature, I'm looking at Christina, so we'll just get a signature and then. And I, they, it's going to take, they do not have the one I need on the lot, so it's going to take them ten to fourteen days to get it in. And they have to order it, so I just let them know, I would let them know after, you know, this next couple of weeks to put it ordering.
Okay, whatever you need, just so you're safe.
Thank you, thank you.
Get a happy dinner, in case you got a chance to get one in the next week.
Yeah.
And then it's all taken care of.
Okay, I will get the paperwork over from, it's a special form from finance, correct, that's what the van was, and so I will get that and I'll bring it over.
So we do want to, okay, I make a motion to approve. Purchasing a vehicle for the juvenile department and also doing the signatures out of report.
Perfect, thank you so much.
So most have been made, second to authorize Erica to purchase a vehicle.
Thank you.
We vote yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, look at that, easy peasy, thank you. That's how it's done.
Bill, it's not going to be that easy, if you want money, we just want Erica to be safe.
It's not always that easy.
Don't be thinking we're handing fifty thousand out left and right, you're really good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Erica, thank you.
Katie, help me to reach some subcontract.
So I'm asking for fifty thousand dollars. This request is budgeted, we have the grant funds already on hand, we went through a process of. Soliciting applications to subcontract with us for general communications work. What I've noticed. For a long time is we're very reactive in our communications around health. I'm wanting to shift our communication plan to be more proactive, we certainly have to do the. Immediate response, we have disaster response, and we have that infrastructure in place. What I'm hoping to build out is the capacity to be proactive and. Preliminary, which is what public health does. We're currently doing some of that, our staff capacity is very limited to do that work. So a subcontract is the route that we went, we did get a proposal, our recruitment was statewide, we. Had an applicant that was local that actually when we did the review, our leadership team. Did the review of the application and recommended moving forward with JXE Consulting. Which is big here in Pineville, which is great too, because a lot of the. Kind of stock communications that come out of or to health authority or other public health entities. The messaging is solid, the delivery isn't always solid, and so to have somebody that understands our community. I think it's a bonus. So I think what we would like to do is. Move forward with contract development and implementation. That works for you all, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Of course, great for me.
Same here, yeah, do we? Is this a discussion item for next week or what?
I think.
Finally, I'm on a discussion because the contract isn't finalized yet, so when I get back.
Okay. And I was going to call you, so if you could just stay a few minutes for commissioner update, then I wouldn't have to, it would be done.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Katie. Wow, gosh, look who's, we're out of money, but look who's up.
I I wonder who that is.
That's a multi here.
Good morning, Commissioners, Christine Hare and Finance Director. I wanted to provide an update on Title III funds and our eligible uses. Part of this is because the authorization for using those funds is anticipated to sunset. It's been reauthorized in future years, but we all typically operate that it will not continue. So the current deadlines for that, for the use of the funds are that a project must be initiated by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And those funds must be returned if they're not obligated under a contract by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So a little bit of background on Title III, the county receives those Title III funds under the Secure Rural Schools Act. And since two thousand, Congress has continued to reauthorize that program through various other laws. Depending upon the year, those reauthorizations either extended or amended the program, so you'll hear the term old funds and new funds. So the old funds are significantly less restricted than the new funds, and the new funds started about twenty sixteen. And are the funds that we received forward from that. The new funds that are received are required to be carried out for certain activities under the Firewise Communities Program. They can reimburse participating counties for search and rescue and other emergency services. Including firefighter, firefighting and law enforcement patrols on public lands. They can cover training costs and equipment purchases directly related to emergency services provided on public lands. Develop and carry out community wildfire protection plans, which is one of the projects that we have approved those funds for. Or provide and expand access to broadband telecommunications services. So each year when we receive those SRS dollars, we're typically receiving between eighty and ninety thousand that are specifically restricted to spending as Title III. Those payments are made through the Forest Service to the states and the states send those out to the counties. So I have attached a breakdown of kind of where we sit with our current balance on those funds. I'm sorry, yeah, there we go, so on the left, take me a minute to get it up on this one.
I don't want to make us dizzy here for a second. Tell me, tell me what we get to where we're looking. There we are.
Perfect. So on the left-hand side, you will see the balance of old funds. As of February twenty twenty-four, the highlighted items are items that we are anticipated to come before you for approval. The weed department for old funds would actually like to request use of those full twelve thousand dollars to continue. Their project up in Juniper Canyon, that project ended this year, but it would just be an extension of that weed project. That would use up the balance of those funds, and that will be coming in another court session, but I wanted to include it on here, just so you had a. A picture of what was going on, and then if you scroll over to the right. The balance of the new funds that we have is that five hundred and fifty-one thousand as of February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And you'll see projects that don't have a value under obligated, our products that we've already paid for the year and are already included. Taken out of that total. So we have already approved all of the items except for the highlighted one, and that one's next on the agenda for your consideration. But this gives you an idea of where we sit with those Title III funds, it does not include any anticipated funds received for this fiscal year. We received those in May, so it gives you just an idea of where we are sitting right now. So wanted to answer any questions that you may have on those and.
So in May, when they. Reformed, we're staying at home hopefully. What you will anticipate that would be?
Somewhere between eighty and ninety thousand for Title III. That's historically been the the trend.
So we've had several years of accumulation.
Correct, we have been trying to figure out ways to spend these funds down historically, and because they are so restricted. It's definitely a challenge to make sure we can find projects that fit the requirements and we have to use those funds.
Christine, I thought you did a very good presentation by adding the explanations after the sheet you have. I read those last night.
Thank you.
Kind of made me understand more, and I thought you did a very good job, I commend you.
Thank you, I know they're long, but I felt like they were important to include, because it gives you more detail than we probably want to sit and talk about.
Yeah, that's been confusing for years.
Yeah, this is, this is laid out really well.
Yeah, Title III is, it's definitely been confusing, and I know Jerry was very involved in. National Association of Counties with Rocky and Title III and with Jerry residing and Rocky also retired from National Association of Counties, so we have. Kind of new blood everywhere. One thing to mention is you'll notice in those requirements for spending, it typically requires it to go in front of a board at the Forest Service. We do not have one in our area, so we don't have to check that box, we just have to notify them that we're spending those.
Sure, we approve and that's it.
Correct, that's why you'll see that little discrepancy between.
Yeah.
How it's been.
And they're in the process of having that board. Because I was on that board and it checked out, but. Do the federal government boost quite slow, then I'm going to do it for a year or so.
Yeah, and I haven't either, in fact, with Eric, with National Association of Counties as well, we're all still on a holding pattern, and Brianna is a contact that I have at. The Forest Service, and we just let them know, and when the board gets set up, they'll let us know, so we can bring things in front of that board.
And I think that board is an important thing, because that is what's going to leave the money in our area.
Yes.
It's really important for the Title II side of the equation. Because currently, the Forest Service is allocating funds from the Title II, they really. In talking with Shane at the Ochko National Forest, they're. Limited to the scope of old projects that were approved when they did have a review. And new ideas really can't get funded under Title II, because there's no history of. The fifteen-member advisory committee approving those kinds of of appointments. You are correct. Over eighteen months ago, there was a forest. Did accumulate a bunch of new applications to reappoint that fifteen-member group of the Ochko Dachu. Resource Advisory Committee, and again, it's stuck somewhere on somebody's desk in Washington D, literally. In Washington, we have one person, according to Shane, he knows who she is. That points, that reviews all those applications. And then ultimately, the Secretary of Agriculture is the only individual. Who can make those appointments, and so. We've been without one since the early teens for our area, I served on it for. Fifteen years, and I was only supposed to be on it for six, but kept getting reappointed because of. The difficulty of getting it through the system. And all it, and then like I said, in the, in there in the Obama administration, it just. They just kind of, it wasn't high priority anymore, so. The county once a year, in the old days, used to make. And a contribution allocation decision between Title II, Title III funds. Does that come in May when?
So we had that opportunity last August, and the court decided on the contribution to remain the same. But we do have that, it should be every August, when we get the opportunity to revise that.
Thanks for the history.
Yeah.
I know, I don't know someplace, you know, you had it approved, I thought we needed to approve it.
No, no, it's, I still sit in honor to ask, mine and dozens of others, it's a fifteen-member group. Representing, it's broken into three categories, A, B, and C. It's five people in each group, Group A is like. Public land user group, so forestry, grazing, recreation. The middle group is more of an environmental organizations. And then the C group is government, so counties, schools. Confederate tribes, the Orange Springs in our example, make up those five, five, five and five.
Want to? No questions?
Yeah, of course.
This is nice, please. I'm just here for moral support.
It's like it's hard to see around everyone, so we are fine.
I just know these don't all work on.
Right, right about the room.
All right, good morning, everybody, thank you for having me, Mitch Madden, Patrol Agent, the Park County Sheriff's Office. Here to talk to you about our, our Mobile Incident Command Post. Here to talk to you about our our mobile incident command post idea and the request for Title III money. To achieve our goal. Specifically here to tell you where the project is at right now and the how and why we need this. This vehicle. So for the sheriff's office, for those of you who might not be. Familiar with our patrol and emergency services. CCSO patrol, when we receive a call for service, whether it be in an emergency or some other non-life threatening emergency. The patrol division is the first end to respond and generally, any incident that occurs out on federal lands or anywhere else in the county. You'll see a patrol deputy respond to that call. And this is done mostly to prevent human injury or death or damage to other property. And specifically property with the with on the federal lands. If we do run into an incident where we need more resources for patrol deputies. We will then spool up for Kenny search and rescue, which is required by ORS and is managed by the. Emergency Management Division of the Sheriff's Office. Our volunteers, there's fifty-five of them. It's a five oh one C three organization. Very well trained, very active, and a very good group of people that we have. We're very fortunate to have them. So the vast majority of our search and rescue operations occur on on federal lands. In twenty twenty-three alone was our, by far busiest year with search and rescue missions. With twenty-nine of those missions occurring on federal lands. These missions can. Consisted of overdue stuck motorists, lost Android recreationalists, even to include suicidal overdose. Person that require quite a few resources to rescue this person. We had a drowning bureau reclamation, so that primal reservoir and also a few wildfire evacuations that also occurred. That had a nexus to the that occurred on federal land or had a nexus to federal. We average about fifteen search and rescue volunteers. Again, our volunteers are. Some of them are retirees, some of them have other full-time jobs that they are obligated to. So when we spool up those resources, they come out. Sometimes we will have our emergency manager, who is an armed deputy and also a patrol deputy. That will respond to these calls for service out on federal lands to assist the volunteers. So last year. The at the end of twenty twenty-three, there were approximately two thousand two hundred fifty-eight hours. That our responders donated to the county, the citizens to rescue individuals. Fifty-three adults, nine children, eighteen animals, and ten. Star missions were began as a SOS cell caller, GPS fixed location. So wildfires, going back to twenty twenty-two. We've had several wildfires that resulted in a level one, two, and three. Level one is a more of a pay be aware this fire could be coming towards you. Keep an eye out on media outlets, whatever the sheriff's office is posting. Level two, it'd be be ready to go and then level three is is going now. So a lot of these fires also require law enforcement presence for evacuations. It was also our immediate response to these fires. We also had. The cowboy fire and I also know the Johnson Creek fire was also an overnight operation. So twenty twenty-two, the cowboy fire started on BLM land up to Inter Canyon. That was a level three evacuation and that was sent out due to the the direction of the fire. How fast it was moving in the unknown of. Once the fire really started going, of where it would go, it was headed directly towards a populated area. Twenty twenty-three, the Johnson Creek fire, it was a level one notification to the residents on Mill Creek. As the fire was leaving the Johnson Creek side. Of the of the ridge where we were at and appeared to be headed towards the residents on Mill Creek. This fire, it was in a remote area and again required an overnight operation. Twenty twenty-three Mackay Creek fire, this was a level two evacuation to area campgrounds in the Mackay Creek drainage. And again, required the response of patrol deputies as well as search and rescue. Some other major events, we all remember the twenty twenty, the twenty seventeen symbiosis eclipse event. I, over an eight-day period, there was a lot of, there's a significant increase in our population. With the big main event, Ebex Summit Prairie on private property, however, there's a lot of spill over onto federally controlled land. I worked up there. Our shifts ranged from, they were supposed to be twelve-hour shifts, but normally were fourteen to sixteen-hour shifts. We had an array of incidents that we were dealing with up there. From the time we checked on to the time we were finally able to go home. The biggest issue that we experienced up there, there is nowhere for law enforcement to escape the heat. Dust or the smoke from an area wildfire that was in that area. So this was a. Demonstrated need of why an incident command post would have been beneficial up there. And then we also have the Oregon Star Party that attracts hundreds of visitors, I believe, every year. We haven't seen any events, but with the popularity of the Ochecos increasing. We're going to see, likely see more issues or search and rescue events occurring in the Ochecos around the area. So our lack of preparedness, right now, the sheriff's office and emergency management has a converted. Two thousand five cargo trailer. This was purchased new in two thousand five and has been in service since that time. It requires a three-quarter ton truck to tow it, which we only have one. So we run into an issue with that. We have a fire, maybe we need ATVs or UTVs to get around. But we only have one vehicle that can tow each trailer, so we run into a conundrum there. The incident command trailer was utilized this summer and. During the roundup and the first races going through it. It is very obvious that it's deteriorating and deteriorating rapidly. The flooring is, the floor tiles that are in there are. Popping up and coming apart from the subfloor, roof vents are leaking or non-operable, cabinets are falling apart. And it's it's showing its age. The communication equipment that is inside is antiquated and no longer serviceable from our IT department. And unfortunately, this trailer cannot sustain a multi-hour or multi-day operation. So to piggyback off of the trailer and continue with our lack of preparedness, the SAR communications vehicle is a converted nineteen nineties. I'm sorry, nineteen eighties ambulance, I believe it was donated by Kirk County Fire and Rescue years ago. It served as a vital role for our search and rescue and also our ham. Radio operators that are also attached to our search and rescue. Ham radio operation is a vital piece of a search and rescue mission. So due to the major mechanical issues this vehicle has, it's been reparked at our EOC offline for about four years now. So our mobile incident command post, a couple of years ago, we had a. Well, we back up here. So our mobile incident command post will enhance our response capabilities to search and rescue missions. Wildfires and any other major event, natural disaster occurring on national forests, land, BLM. But also any major natural disaster that could occur, say, within the city of Supremeville. So we recognize that we have a lack of preparedness and we're moving forward with trying to fix that next time. So our first objective and one thing I'd like to point out with these objectives, there's there's only two of them. These objectives are, they're they're living objectives and will be our objectives from. Design and implementation all the way through the end of life with our mobile incident command post. So first and foremost, we'd like to implement a mobile incident command coast. Command post equipped with state-of-the-art communications technology. And develop a seamless communication between government agencies, emergency responders, and other community stakeholders. We'll be planning on utilizing satellite communication, mobile networks, and other advanced technologies to establish reliable communication channels. Many of you have probably been out in the Ochecos and cell service can be very spotty out there. Our radio communications out there can also be spotty, if not nonexistent in some areas. So our plan is to, again, develop the competence by T system. Objective number two, enhanced coordination and response capabilities. So with this bus, we're going to, I call it a bus. We're going to implement a training opportunity for select. Road deputies and also search and rescue members to be able to deploy this. Properly set it up and use it the way that it's designed. Our additional plan is to facilitate real-time data sharing and collaboration amongst response teams, command, and other involved agencies. This bus could be used out in the field for an incident with real-time information being pushed out. Or social media platforms, but also can communicate back to our emergency operations center during a major disaster. With this bus and the technology will quickly be able to address threats and other hazards at that specific incident. It will also be able to determine current future needs of that operation as it unfolds. And again, a little bit out of order, but we want to develop a self-contained vehicle to sustain a multi-day operation there. Step and rally and recuperate. A happy workforce is a good workforce. Our benefits, there are several benefits with this, but the ones that I want to really highlight is the real-time data access. Media citizen updates and also our resource management. So this year alone, we experimented, I'm sure Elliot and I experimented with the Facebook Live. It was very well received and we were able to cut down on the curious minds calling into nine-one-one or calling the sheriff's office. So if we get in a major incident out in the Ocheco National Forest or on other BLM land, we'll be able to have that mobility. That communication to quickly efficiently push out information to citizens, but also. Potentially the commissioners. So our resource management, from this platform, we can effectively deploy our resources. And again, we can also share real-time information and have that information available at our at our needs. Next slide. So our plan, as you can see in the picture, it's the OSU four H. Bus, it's a converted motorhome, so to speak. I really enjoy driving it, but it's it's. For the most part itself, where we, for what we need, there's already data, network cable already ran through it. It just needs some some TLC. Next slide, please. Again, we we have this bus with the networking data cable, the odometer on this, it's a two thousand three freightliner. Chassis essentially, it only has twenty-five thousand miles. I heard Tim that you had a hand in bringing it up here.
Say one another history lesson. So this vehicle is actually owned by the county, was purchased in two thousand eleven. From, it came from Tallis, Fort Worth area. I drove it home. It had a big hole in the side because it had a refrigerator fire that. And so I came across Calico, Wyoming, Idaho. And and I love, I did as well. It's an old heavy Cadillac and it's a wonderful thing. But we, under the VTOP grant, broadband technology opportunity deal that built the open campus building. This mobile classroom was a part of that VTOP program. It was designed and used early in its life to deliver technology classes throughout the central Oregon area. We could take the classroom to the people. The library, we took a lot of times to the library, to the line, and we took it lots of different places. At the end of the VTOP, it's the grant, we didn't have anyone to sort of service, provide education through it. And so it was leased for a while by Oregon State University. They used it for about four years for their entrepreneurship program. It traveled around the state. For a while, ultimately ended up in Malheur County where they sort of serviced. The eastern side of the state again focusing on used entrepreneurial education programs. A couple of years ago. The emergency management services. And the extension and you guys decided it was time to bring it home and repurpose it for emergency management. Systems, so. It was completely gone through by the time High Desert RB now Pro RB, they're the one, they, when I brought it home. They took the roof off of it, it has a brand new roof. We took all the interior out of it. And turned it into the tables. We put the technology in it at the time, it was satellite communication with. With the internet. It worked okay at the time, but I see you're looking to Starlink. I'm kind of curious how much better that will be than. Our old U net system, but yeah, so that's kind of a.
It does not have a giant hole on the side of it.
I don't know, make sure that all knew.
Thank you, Tim. So continuing on, again, there's workspaces, freshwater tank, black water tank and HVAC. Along with solar power, shore power, and also generator power. So moving on, vehicle modifications, there obviously need to be some interior modifications to fit our current and future needs. The plan is to have two separate working areas with a. Where the the front space would be kind of where the the road deputies would be at and a lot more of the strategic plan will occur in a. Private back spare office area where command would likely operate. We plan on having fold-down bunks in the quiet command room for overnight operations. And also an antenna mass to act as a standalone repeater site for emergency operations. During an event on our federal lands. The plan is to also have emergency lights, off-road lights and scene lighting. Three hundred sixty degrees scene lighting around the vehicle. And the biggest piece is that this board can be completed by local businesses here in Primeville. So our infrastructure, as Tim mentioned, we are looking at utilizing Starlink. Personally, I've used Starlink in the past and it's a very robust, it's a, it's a system that will fit our needs greatly. So we will be able to effectively run. Our small social media platforms, we'll also be able to link in our drones during an operation on federal lands. And which will allow command to access drone sense, to monitor an event. Even back here in in Primeville while some operations going on on the Ochecos. The radio communications plan is a robust plan that we have with our city of Primeville IT. Which is where we get our IT services through. James Wilson, very knowledgeable with IT infrastructure, radio communications. And also has a fire command background, so he's been very helpful with the design of this. So we currently deploy Motorola Apex radios, which is a tri-band radio, so we'll be able to cover VHF, UHF, and seven eight hundred megahertz. Throughout our county, M radios, and also a mobile repeater. One piece that this mobile incident command post will be able to help us with is a mobile dispatch center. Having a mobile dispatch center within the bus will take workload off of our main city of Primeville Police Department Dispatch Center. And we'll be able to route calls to our mobile incident command post during a specific operation. And the the dispatching services, we would more than likely have a certified dispatcher from the dispatch center and help us out with that. So for IT equipment. Inside the mobile incident command post, speaking with James Wilson, the computer monitor life expectancy is five to seven years. inside the, uh, it mobile incident command post, I'm speaking with James Wilson, the computer monitor life expectancy is five to seven years. Um, awkward to, to be utilized. This will also in the future, once we reach that five to seven year mark, the, um, the procurement of further computers will be absorbed by the, the sheriff's office within our budget. And same with the radio communication, um, piece of it, which their life expectancy is ten to twelve years. Um, but just like anything else, if you take care of it, it'll, it'll last for longer than that. So some quotes, um, again, the interior exterior construction, uh, graphics wrap IT permit. Um, and I, I threw this in there that, uh, the, there could be some adjustments within the quotes. So locally performance and repair specialties that are located here in Prineville. They specialize in off-road vehicle equipment, wiring diagnostics and also custom fabrication. They have experience with, uh, RV installations and are currently outfitting our patrol vehicles. They do a phenomenal job with, with, especially with the attention to detail, but also their expertise. They've been able to do a complete walkthrough inside and outside of the bus that we have and came up with a pretty, uh, comprehensive and awesome, uh, quote and design for the incident command post. And right now they quoted their work at about fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, so far they are the only company that has got back to us. Um, I've reached out to three separate companies and they're the only one that got back to us on, on a quote. Rib Q Graphics, uh, is located in Madras. They have experience with, uh, wrapping and designing, uh, emergency vehicle graphics. Our plan is to use our new graphics package that is on our, um, on our patrol vehicles. Bill, uh, thanks up the buck and bronc is him on this. We'll put Bill on the side of our bus. Um, so they have the, the ability to pull this bus into a bay and, uh, use whatever means necessary to remove the old graphics and, and wrap our, our new vehicle. So far they have come in the lowest bid at about fourteen thousand dollars. Primal IT, again, we utilize their IT services within the sheriff's office. They will provide the mobile data terminals, the radio, um, and any camera systems that might be on the, on the bus as well. They also maintain our VHF and seventy-eight hundred maker radio system. So they'll have a key component in this. Well over thirty years of experience. They know what they're doing and, um, will be crucial for our future upgrades to the incident command post. Their robust plan, um, is about two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. However, these numbers can fluctuate on either the ITN or say the, um, uh, performance and repair specialties. It's gonna be a, an effort of getting James and Kelly, the owner of Performance and Repair together to make sure we're not duplicating work on each, on each quote. So these, these quotes can be more than likely, uh, reduced. That is all I have in a very small nutshell. Any questions?
I have one question.
Excited to be here. Thank you.
Brian Mike has a question.
Um, I know that typically this type of vehicle does not require a commercial driver's license, but being repurchased for this position, would it qualify for that?
Based on my research, no.
We didn't have to have one when, uh, we were using as an educational, you know, cause it only helped two people at a time as you drove it down the road and when it was parked, nobody cared how many people were inside it. The one thing I might suggest, cause I don't know, is you check the age, condition of the tires.
Yes, we did.
Cause I don't remember the last time. I know we replaced it when we got it. And they tend to age out before they miles.
Certainly they'll do that.
We, we've had the tires looked at and they're, they're still in great shape.
And we did, uh, pick the color because of OSU. You'll notice the orange and black. It was gray and black when we bought it.
It was just bright then.
And, and one, one person on the court complained about no green. And so we came up with the design. If you'd like to have that design, I'd share it with you of what we call green splat. It was, uh, got Bill and a little lake. We were gonna put it on the windshield. If you want to make, make us screen on the side and then.
Hey Mitch, uh, one question after you is, you know, timing wise or action wise, are you looking to have this on the agenda next week for them to approve the contract with these outfits or you need a little bit more time to firm up the numbers to bring back the contracts?
No, I, I would like to ask to move, move forward with everything next week.
Okay.
We do want to be careful. We do have a forty-five day public comment period required. So we need to start that next week. And then once that ends, we can go ahead and start.
Okay. So you want to wait to award the contracts until after the forty-five days?
Yeah. Cause if there's some public comment that for some reason we don't move forward with it.
So the next week when we do, when he does his presentation, then will there be a motion made to open the public comment or how?
Correct. Yeah. The motion will be to approve the use of those guns and open the public comment period.
Okay.
And Andy, just to touch a little bit more on what you were talking about, this, uh, project is also going to be, um, I utilize Microsoft Planner to manage all my other projects that I have going. So this project will be managed through Microsoft Planner with, um, really bi-weekly and monthly check-ins with the, uh, entities that are helping build this up.
Okay. So discussion next week is morning. Okay.
Yes, please. Thanks Mitch.
Thank you.
You guys.
Bill, maybe we can make you the person on the back that's waving on there.
All right, moving on. We need development. Randy.
So we'll go on vacation. The train is about sick. We've got the bug going through there. You just found me today. Good to see everybody. So I think what I'll do is I'll just start backwards and kind of cover it too. And start there. They seem, everybody's heavy month for them. They've got, uh, large amounts of complaints coming into the single area. So I'm going to discuss that a little bit to the county court as far as that subdivision and the prior history from like the early two thousand eights. Let's see Mitch smiling. He knows what I'm talking about. So, um, anyways, that's the impact I think in, in, in those numbers as far as the thirty-eight one mark. Um, so good news is that the onsite scene, it's a little bit of uptick in their permit activity, which, you know, construction between uh, fall or early spring is typically always low due to the snow, the install septics. But, uh, the weather's improved and some soils, it will start doing some side valves. So usually that's kind of the, our indicator, one thing they're starting to progress, at least in the, you know, the county side for the residential stuff. And that's where all your on sites are. So that's just kind of a normal pattern for us as far as the weather and I mean for that. Land used to down a little bit. One thing to note is Dollar General still they've accepted and then review for the Dollar General store that is going to be potentially those from Jimper Canyon. So they'll be working on that. They're gonna have to go through environmental, uh, for a subject system there as well. So, you know, they've got some road impact studies, stuff like that that we're beginning with, uh, County planning. Um, among building the corporate side, um, again, three standards still a little slow, but that's normally be expected this time of year. Um, commercial though is, and I keep repeating is still just staying strong, which is not, uh, you know, been the pattern for the prior eight years, you know, about the last eight years we've seen. And that's not just the data centers. It's the other businesses coming in. Um, currently right now, even though the incoming slope, we still got about two hundred houses that are being under construction currently. About five hundred and fifty, seven hundred and thirty residential type buildings, whether they're shops, old bars, garages. Um, two hundred and sixty-nine active commercial type of permits. Um, you know, just barely dipping below the thousand inspections a month that our team does onsite inspections of each job. Uh, some larger projects we got coming in, just can be, it's notes is County Fire and Rescue. I'm not sure if everybody knows they're going under a big remodel for both their fire station and the annex. We've got their plans. We're trying to complete those now, but one other component to that, if you guys get any questions, is the old Leshawo, uh, headquarters area. That's where we're, uh, right now getting permits to put some temporary trailers there to house them and their operations. So we've seen a shift to the ball of fire equipment and being relocated there. It's currently, Russ knows, uh, got it all fenced off and he's been securing the trailers and so Russ has been kind of rusted boots and kind of heading that for the fire department. Um, we have the new jockey room for the fairgrounds. We'll get that in for review. Um, so we'll begin that. Uh, St. Charles Hospital is doing a small pin improvement from a procedure room to a new triage. So sometimes that comes with mad gas or, you know, all different electrical locations that take some more, more expectation marketing to look at. Um, some activity on Cessna and some of it is the existing commercial buildings built about five years ago. We got a couple of business coming in and I believe they're shooting counting. It's a metal manufacturing company that do powder coating and repad. So, well, those are in review now. Um, and then, uh, the Apple campus, um, we're working again with more beings with them in regards to the transition of general contractors up there. Initially, we had discussed that they were going to take half of the building that's currently under construction. It's a framed up roof on. We're going to take half that building and do a certificate of occupancy because it is complete. Essentially they chose to build half a building first and then the other half. The other half were going to leave in a shell occupancy and they were going to do a shell only. Um, negotiations are now beginning between our staff, um, the property owner and their contractor. They'll have a transition of more of a rather than a TCO for that second half of the structure, just a transition of general contractors. We just scope of work is not quite adequate enough to receive an temporary CFO from our business. So there's some strengths there to try and react to. But they're getting ready to set up new, uh, office trailers, both for us and logistics office, which then our inventory office. Depending on how big they get, we maybe have a mobile building department site up there again. Um, uh, let's see. Another now we have the state, uh, state building division came in last week, um, to do some update training on a cellular lab for inspectors. Um, they also offered as we go to January twenty twenty-five to not prohibiting all digital plans be submitted. Now we are going to be required to accept digital. Now it's currently the, you know, jurisdictions have the right to ask for paper copies only. Uh, the state's making the transition, working with each jurisdiction to make sure that they're capable to accept those. So they will be, they came and did some training for our staff on the back office of Ocella and Blue Bean, which is consistent with what we've been trying to do the last six, eight months with our team to work prepared for that. But I think that's, I don't have long to close. If there's any questions.
This is the, maybe on the jockey room, do you know, did the rodeo club come in and expand the width? They had talked about taking on, and I never heard and a, they were gonna expand the width and pay for that. Do you even have, have any knowledge of that at all?
I don't. All I know is that Casey has to bring the plans in a little early prior to contractor selection because, you know, uh, you got to go back a couple of big. So we had just got the plans. That's, that may be more of a Casey question.
Yeah, yeah.
I saw last weekend a network like it was bigger than what it had been. The, the, the dirt work that was being done looked like it was bigger.
Yeah, they had talked about adding thirty.
Oh, I know. All in all, things are still rolling pretty good. They are, you know, Justice Center where you guys still, I mean, that's and it's moving along. I mean, you guys still got till June for completion, correct?
Yeah.
Later part. Yeah. So we got the new band down already. We're gonna do. And there's a bunch of other small ancillary, tons of commercial things going on, but you know, there's just some of the bigger ticket items that, you know, you guys may see your questions on. Um, yeah. All well good.
Thank you. Okay, Tim again.
Sitting in the back room.
They're gonna have the view of the story title also.
Sometimes I feel like it. No. Uh, so good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, so I thought I would come and, uh, provide the court with an update on, uh, the Central Oregon Crop Protection District. Um, a year ago, the court in May, uh, well, actually you wrote the letter, I think in June, uh, supporting, uh, the withdrawal of Kirk County, uh, from the Central Oregon Crop Protection District. Uh, so what is that? So in the state of Oregon, there are four current crop protection districts. Uh, the one that gets all the public press is the Willamette Valley one, which limits the amount of acres, uh, that can grow canola. Uh, the Willamette Crop Protection District, uh, is legislatively set district. Uh, the other three are were created, uh, by the Oregon Department of Agriculture. Um, the Central Oregon, the Northeast Corner Union, Malawa County. That's the third one. And then a sliver of Mount Your County, part of the Treasure Valley area, uh, cropping area is the fourth one. Um, when the ODA held their public meeting last May, um, here in Prineville, the idea was, uh, is the crop protection district still serving the needs of Central Oregon farmers? Uh, if, uh, there was any interest in modifications, what would those modifications be? Uh, the crop protection district really limits, uh, the production, uh, or controls the production of brassicas. Uh, a group of plants that include canola, turnips, cabbage, uh, a whole lot of things. Um, and probably were created, uh, for the purposes, uh, back then of, uh, there's in the canola world, there's two different kinds of canola. There's industrial canola and then uh, human food consumption canola and urastic acid, uh, being a part of canola. Uh, in the industrial version, there are high urastic levels, which are toxic to humans. And in the food world, it's low urastic canola that we grow for oil for human consumption. That's, um, it was also way back when concerns about, uh, genetically modified organisms, canola crops. Some of them are genetically modified varieties, uh, issues of other impacts on our carrot seed industry and some other vegetable seed industries was believed to be why the district was created in the early two thousands. So fast forward to last week, Oregon Department of Ag was back over in Central Oregon to have another, uh, public meeting on the crop protection districts. Uh, this time it was in Madras. Uh, so we only had a couple of cent of Kirk County farmers that made it to the Madras site. Uh, we learned that in the last nine months, uh, Oregon Department of Ag has discovered that, uh, they really had, they have no statutory authority to have created the districts in the first place. Uh, that, uh, at the time, a couple of employees, uh, interpretation of the statutes gave them some authority and that's how they would have created them. Uh, in today's world and today's understanding of the same statutes, the ODA wouldn't have the authority to create. ODA only has the authority to, to regulate issues associated with pests, disease and insect. Uh, not pollinator issues. So cross pollination between crop A and crop B is not something ODA can regulate. Uh, they also can't modify the current crop protection districts, uh, which is kind of what we were after a year ago through the letter the court wrote was uh, just remove us from the crop protection district because the Jefferson, uh, county growers at the time thought maybe there was some benefit in keeping the crop protection district. And the Deschutes farmers weren't present. So, um, anyway, we've learned that they cannot modify. They can only either eliminate or continue to operate the. They can only either eliminate or continue to operate the existing one. Uh continue to operate the existing one, they really have no authority to uh impose any sort of fines, fees. They, if you grow brassicas uh in Central Oregon now, you're supposed to uh seek a license. Uh in your, if you're growing canola, you need to seek a research uh partner. And in this case, it's usually OSU, uh the experiment station and others that will provide that. Research connection. And you're supposed to pin your field, so everybody knows where you're growing canola. And no other brassica crop has to get pinned. So this whole issue of cross pollination, if it were an issue, ODA still could, because they don't know where other brassica crops are being brought. So there was lots of discussion last week about, you know, well, can we modify? Can we get grower groups together to create new rules? Uh the ODA folks kept saying, you can do whatever you want as a grower group. Uh but ODA again can't modify the existing rules, they can't modify the existing district. They can only either operate with bad rules or eliminate the district. There was some desire last week, both from the ODA folks and the Jefferson County folks. Well, let's just wait and see what happens in the Willamette Valley with the legislation. They tried to fix the Willamette Valley one uh this short session, some of that made the press. Ultimately, they didn't fix anything, they extended the five hundred acre crop limitation for canola until twenty twenty six. Uh and so, but again, Willamette's different than ours because they're controlled legislatively. That's why everybody wants to get involved in theirs, ours is not. So in theory, ODA could just eliminate it. Um so, again, bring this up. Uh the Cork Wheeler County Farm Bureau meant last week following that meeting. Uh they have chosen to write ODA another letter. Uh this time, instead of asking for the withdrawal of Kirk County from the Crop Protection District. Just eliminating the Crop Protection District. Uh given that, that's really the only option at the moment. And then if the growers of Central Oregon want to get together and create some set of growing guidelines. That neighbor to neighbor works with each other, uh that maybe there's some sort of pinning of crops. Uh so that Farmer A would know what Farmer B is growing in the case of uh pollination issues. Then, then they would have that kind of information. Uh again, a grower group like that has no authority for enforcement. It's just be, uh they ask the questions, it becomes a shaming sort of thing that, you know, grower A didn't participate. And, and now is making it hard for thirty other growers to economically grow a crop. So uh well, again, one of the reasons we last year chose to remove Kirk County from the district. Is in particular growing canola. Uh it's an annual crop, it's a drought resistant crop, it provides a, a crop rotation opportunity. That we don't currently have in Kirk County. We now have processors in Central Oregon that are processing canola for oil, for human consumption. Uh so it's, there's an industry that uh is there. Uh brassicas uh are also used for bio mitigation issues. Uh if you allow the crop to go to full flower. You get some biofumigation benefits, uh so disease insect control uh for the next crop you grow. Uh and so there's some benefit, but again, uh you can't take those crops to, under current rules. To full flower, uh and it's at full flower when you get the bio mitigation benefits. So um we have a lot of growers who are still doing it, have done it. Uh they're in violation of the rule and, and there's no enforcement. So it's kind of like, if you can enforce something, why do you have the silly rules? Um anyway, so I would, if you're looking for a suggestion. Uh I would suggest the county and, and we can draw, I don't have it for your review today. But for future discussion and adoption, a, a letter uh to ODA. Uh restating some of the positions you took uh last summer with the first letter. Uh with the final recommendation that they dissolve the Crop Protection District.
That would be my purpose, if you would do that. Until we use is all of it, you can't fix it.
No.
Yeah, so it's low as all of it. But it'd be something that there's some interest in looking and having some type of pinning and keep track of everything if not. And because it, you know, it's harming agriculture as it is, because it's less going crops can't grow. Which can grow if it's can.
Correct. So. And, and the whole pollinator that, it's really becomes for some of folks in the vegetable seed industry. Uh which is much heavier in Jefferson County than it is here, is the concern about cross pollination of contamination of seed. Does it or doesn't uh occur? It, it again deals with the management of the crop, because we have growers who are growing canola right in it thirty inches apart. From their carrot seed field and they're not having a problem. So uh managed in those kind of fashions. It's the crop risk to another crop is very, very minimal. It's, it's a thing that's in place that just in today's system. And according to ODA, they can't enforce anything that's in it, so.
And would it be okay to have Tim drop that letter? We can just put on the consent agenda for your approval next week?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, Jim wanted to invite you to the week.
Thanks, Tim. Hey, Kim, are you?
She's online. Yeah, she is.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning, I am wanting to get your consideration to appoint Hunter Newheart. To our Ag Extension Services District Advisory Board. That um current members and all the staff feel that he would be a great addition to our board.
I agree with you, Kim, and what's nice is he's young and I think that's really great. So I certainly would agree with you as your recommendation.
Hey.
Yeah, I agree too, Kim, I'm just uh prove it, put it on the consent agenda for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
And hey, Mr. Parks.
And we uh wanted to follow up here with the Budget Committee Appointments and Compensation Committee Appointments. Christina Henigan and Amy Albert have been able to talk with three of the four applicants for the Compensation Committee. Those three, uh Joe McCabe, Bill Anderson and Rhonda Sneva. They all meet the requirements, the ORS, in terms of experience and background. Uh the fourth candidate that had applied, Joel Hoff, he has withdrawn his application. So there's those three, uh the one thing just make sure you're aware of is Joe McCabe is a county employee. But, you know, for the interview, you know, she has the relevant background for that uh, that role.
Okay, I, I know that Seth had a problem with the fact that we have a county employee on here, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure whether it was there, but.
Why would we be concerned?
I'm just throwing it out there, that's all I'm doing.
Yeah, he's expressed that, you know, to me as well.
Several times, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh I don't have a problem, either way, I'm just, I'm just expressing a comment made to me.
Maybe we need again to.
Three.
We need.
For the, yes, the confirmation.
Yeah, so I'm totally fine with all three, it's fine with me to move forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it, if we don't, then we'll have to find another one.
Right, yeah, the, the discussion uh that I mentioned last session as well is. Historically, those three positions have been appointed to one year terms. And my suggestion was to appoint one for three, one for two and one for one year. And if it's okay with you, I can reach out to each of them or have Christina Henigan reach out to them and see if we can. Get.
Coordinate.
Yeah, coordinate and have them, you know, you know, agree. And if they do, we'll go ahead and put it all in there in a packet for one, two and three. And you're okay with putting on the consent agenda? And if Commissioner Crawford wants to pull it off the agenda, he can put it under discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay, the, the Budget Committee, uh Christina Aaron has been able to and uh. I believe she's had Jamie involved as well, been able to interview two of the five candidates. Uh she's been able to confirm two interviews for next week and she's uh attempting to reach out. And, you know, confirm an interview with the other individual. That may not be done prior to Wednesday. If it's not, in fact, I think, you know, given, you know, where this is, we have a little bit more time with them. Uh that we find out from, you know, Christine and Jamie, where they are, get that information to you. And my suggestion would be you get the information from them and then decide. I think to rate your picks and then get those all back to, to Sarah. And then Sarah could compile, compile that in terms of here's the top picks and then we can move forward with that. Leave up, you know, if you wanted to follow up with any of the candidates, follow up with Christina, Jamie, you can do that to come to your picks. In terms of your, you know, top rankings. Uh we'll also reach out to Steve Markell, who is the Budget Committee Chair, have him do the same thing. And bring all that together to Sarah, we'll know what, you know, whether we've got a consensus or whether there's. Several, you know, twos, if there's a lot of. Overlap, spread out, we can bring it back and have a discussion at your April ten meeting.
Yeah, so are we waiting for Christina and Jamie's uh or should we go ahead ourselves? That's the only question I have.
Uh she has uh interviews early next week, I believe, with uh two of the, you know, two of the three remaining. And then the other individual just has not been able to confirm that individual, I believe, is Joel Hoff, is that right? And Joel is the individual that withdrew from the Compensation Committee, you know, so I'm not sure if, you know, he may also choose to withdraw from the Budget Committee. But.
Okay, then we'll just wait for you then.
Yeah, the two interviews we have next week are on Tuesday.
Okay, so. Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, so we'll get one, one moving forward, the other one, like I say, April seventeenth would be the target date.
We can speak about it again on the April tenth court session, which would have a little bit more of that, the interviews completed.
Well. That almost concludes it, I have a moment off for record or off the agenda we're gonna need to discuss.
Okay.
This pertains to the Justice Center. I need the authorization to sign supplemental service budget with Pinnacle Architect. And this pertains to the lot that we purchased um next to on Second and Claypool. That house will be uh soon be vacant and we'll, we'll develop it and make it into a parking lot. But I can't do any of that stuff until I get our pinnacle architect to get the schematic drawings and things done. We've had some meetings, they've been doing some work for us to try to get this started, we're trying to try to get it completed. Same time we do the Justice Center for the type, we have it all done, the Claypool Street has to be modeled, do and redo. And so we're working with the, with the city on transferring some responsibilities that we take Claypool and they take Second Street. So we can combine with this parking lot. So what I'm asking for is to um have authorization to approve the contract for. And then that serves over eight for sixty six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars of income.
Yeah. Do I make a motion right now? Because usually what I want to make a motion, you tell me no. No, and I'm speaking out of turn, I'm speaking in turn, what am I doing here?
So I would appreciate the motion to uh approve this right here.
Okay.
Supplemental agreement for this amount right here.
Okay.
Uh for authorization for me to sign it.
I made, I made a motion to approve Pinnacle Architecture Incorporated, project two oh three six. Dot C C J for the amount of sixty six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. I get it.
Excellent, thank you, sign it out of court.
Hey.
For me, perfect.
Oh, oh, and I'm ten, and to be signed out of court, sorry, you didn't mention that the first time around.
Okay, it's all right.
Okay.
Is that all we need, John?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you need to go down. Nice second, need discussion.
All right.
All there, hi. Wish you pass. Thank you.
And I think I dropped the ball in getting this on the agenda, so my apology.
Like I say, I, I, when I make a motion, you tell me no, then I don't make a motion, you know, I just.
I'm never mad now.
You gotta raise your hand for me.
I never say no.
Okay.
They, they say no.
I want all of them, you guys have heard that, Saban, he never says no, okay.
Do we have any, do you have a report?
Yeah, I have just one item with Jackie being here, and Jack, if you could weigh in on this. I talked to you each yesterday about, you know, a customer in.
Yeah.
The thought of sending them a letter, uh Jackie went ahead and talked with her staff today. Uh kind of to get their feeling on things and, you know, what that is kind of a minimum, you know, step. And I let her kind of give you the staff input of what they'd like to see and see what you want to do.
Uh so Saturday was my first interaction with Todd Hedges. I had three interactions with him that day total. Um come to find out, this individual, pretty much every time he's in there. Has something to say to somebody, it's never very polite. When it has to deal with a female member of the staff, it's especially elevated. Um she doesn't want to comply with separating his materials. Uh so that's always been an issue, he feels he's being harassed. Uh so Saturday, um do you want me to go into what the interaction was Saturday or?
I don't know that you need to get into the specifics, but let's just say it's not behavior that you would tolerate from anyone.
There's a lot, there are a lot of threats, a lot of verbal interaction between myself and Todd. The one thing I would like you to know, he made a verbal comment over the phone after my first contact. That there's a lot of crazy people in the world and I shouldn't talk to him the way that I was, even though I hadn't said anything. And somebody, somebody one day is going to do something about it. So I should take into consideration the crazy people in the world. And I got him calmed down and he came back up one more time. He's also hung up the, on the fact that we give a ten dollar discount to county residents, that's his new hang up. Regardless, my scale attendants are female. Uh the one attendant that has been there for several years is to the point where she doesn't want to deal with him. She just gives him a card and sends him on his way because she's afraid of him. Um he had an interaction with a female operator, he didn't like what she had to say when he was angry with her. Came into the office, I was gone that day, not sure who dealt with him after that. And then, of course, Saturday was the interaction with myself. Saturday is the day he comes in, I don't have management staff, I only have three people that day. Uh that leaves a skilled tenant up front by herself. At this point, the whole crew is under the assumption that he is not a safe individual to deal with. And they would prefer that he did not come back to our facility.
Well, then we're still letting him come back.
We'll help you with that.
Yeah, so like, so we, I mean, we talked and we had the conversation of the original letter, you know, hey, you get one more try. Uh so I had that conversation with, with the staff this morning, they still weren't comfortable with that, they'd rather he not. I let them know that, you know, we could communicate with the sheriff's office. The second they saw his rig coming around the corner, they, they could hit the panic button or give you guys a call. Um I mean, let you guys know that if it's somebody's calling from the landfill on a Saturday, it's going to be that guy. And that's a thing to do, I know it takes you guys a while to get there still.
Can we get some, uh after this, can we meet up and we'll just get some more additional information, I'll put it out to the staff.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so yesterday you had talked about a warning letter.
Right.
We are talking about a terminate, of which. You're talking about a terminate, uh which I want you to know, Jackie, when he told me the story, I just want to say, don't come back. So and I guess Brian's on the same page as I am. So can we just do a don't come back thing?
Yeah, yeah, Eric is prepared, whichever direction we go and so.
And that's exactly what needs to be done, you don't need to put up with that and you don't need threats and and I do appreciate you talking.
Well, if we get that. Letter. Uh we can actually put that in our records management system under a trespass order, so it'll be available to any.
Yeah, we'll make sure you guys are copied on.
And I would just make sure that it specifically says in there, these trespass from. Uh the county line, the Kirk County landfill, because then that gives us more teeth when he does, or if he does violate that. It gives us more teeth that he's been put on notice and he's intentionally trespassing, which is what Kerry is going to need to prosecute.
Right, yeah, so we'll go ahead and have Eric, you know, send out a draft.
How, can I ask how he will be serving those Saturdays around the corner? Um I'll be, I don't work Saturdays, I'll be at work, Aaron's going to be at work, just try and.
I would recommend civil process and Deschutes County.
Yeah, thank you, we can coordinate with Eric to expedite that so it can be done Friday.
Uh yeah. It would, well.
As it has been getting served, by the time Saturday comes here, it's going to be pretty.
It's going to be pretty tight, but.
Come every Saturday?
That's what I'm hearing from staff, so I, so I'll be.
Lot of garbage.
He rents his dump trailer out and then.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I knew that, I knew that, yes, okay.
But yeah, so I'll be on staff. As a skilled tenants don't want to deal with him and then uh Aaron will be there, he's kind of our heavy hitter that we have, so. He will be on staff on Saturday too.
Okay, and then we just get that letter drafted as soon as we can. I shouldn't have to go through that, Jack.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
So if he does show up Saturday. And there's not a problem, then he probably, he won't have been notified, so. This doesn't make any difference if he's in.
Yeah, we would love to help you out with that problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the only item I had.
All right.
Commissioner update, so la- this past Friday, I was on a Zoom call with nine people that represented. Uh basically the governor's office and agencies, the E Q, Dagami, the environmental and O H A. At that time, they discussed that they wanted to have a town hall meeting. I felt that a- about the water contamination at Stanic and LaMonta. I felt that that maybe wasn't the best way to serve our population, I was afraid in a town hall meeting. It would get colorful, there would be certain people yelling and not, the people would not be heard. So my suggestion was to do a listening session at the library. We would have coffee and donuts in one room, they could, they could gather. And then the individual households could have ten minutes in the secondary room where they could. Present pictures, their story, if they have a water filtration system. The only caveat with that is if they do provide medical records. We are going to put it in the announcement and verbally tell them they would not, they would be a public record. So if they were a private medical record, they needed to know before they. Uh turned that in or talked about it, that it would become public record at that time. I talked to uh D E Q and we were thinking the time of four to seven. That way, some people could come in early, other people that got off work at five or six could still be uh. Validated and come in and tell their information, I talked to D E Q this morning and we're going to go for two days. There is a doodle poll out amongst all the agencies as to what works best for them all to get together. And then as my understanding, on the third day. They are going to go out to the different households and test their wells if. They obtain permission from the homeowner. So so that seems to be, the listening sessions seem to be very well received by the agencies. And the governor's office was very happy with that idea, and again, I feel that is the best way to take a volatile situation. And try to get the people heard, get the information individually out without. The theatrics, I guess, so that is basically my. Report of what I've been doing. And again, I'm waiting for the dates and I'll coordinate and. Brian had a good idea, if I can't get the library, then we'll do the C O C building. Somehow I'll find the place we can have it, but again, on individual basis. So that's what I wanted to tell you.
I think that's a very good way to do it. And then each person can get heard and.
Yeah.
Mass.
Yeah, and the idea is, and again, I'll facilitate it, and again, I'm going to try to. Uh convey that this is not a town hall, this is an individual household. Able to tell their story. Because again, I want everyone, and yesterday I was reaffirmed by this because. Basically, my realtor has a mom out in that area and she has never spoken in a public meeting and would not. But she would speak here because she does have public health problems, she is having issues, and so that made me feel even better to know that I'm going to get. Everyone heard, rather than just three or four vocal people. So that's kind of, so I'm calling in a listening session, if you guys have a better name for it. And then again, since I have the emails from the people that wrote me, I would send emails out. Sarah and I talked about a press release. So we will try to get the information out as best as we can, but there's kind of a little movement out there and I'm. Pretty sure they themselves will get the information out. That's it.
I have nothing.
Okay.
You have, you and I are meeting with uh Steve Forster.
Yes, so uh we are, Andy and I are going at one o'clock today to meet with Steve Forster. The subject of that meeting is the fairgrounds. We have aging fairgrounds, we have uh what we're hurting on our revenue sources. So because of the benefits of our events to the city of Primeville, we are going to try to. Come up with an agreement or a linkage and try to put the city more involved with the fairgrounds and. Trying to get some of our repair issues and those things. Uh. Mediated, I guess, I don't know what term there, but. Yeah, that's it. I'm very happy about the water thing, I think that that's going to be very helpful for the people.
We need to diffuse it a little bit.
Yeah, like I say, you ain't got to do that at town halls with the one, oh, uh, there's predominant, our dominant, okay. So can we have a break, please?
We will, after we read into the script for executives.
Okay.
Which I have printed on the bottom of the agenda, so you can just read that.
Okay, all right, the rules are.
You you can bring.
The Kirk County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session on the purpose of consulting. With counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to litigation. Or litigation likely to be filed, the executive session is held for. O R S one nine two uh six six zero two H. Yeah, representatives of the news media and designated, designated staff. Shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberation. During the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the rooms.